Well, good morning, everyone. I will, for not there, call this meeting to order. Welcome. Thank you all for being here Tuesday morning, boys. Mr. McKee, would you like to do the indication? This morning, just check it out.
That's great. Thank you for bringing us together to do the business of the city. And we have a spirit of collaboration in the room to all be focused on what is best for our city and for our people here. We pray and thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for all our blessings. We pray for every citizen of this city that you will guide and watch over us. We pray for the people in the Ukraine and all towns across the world, but those people will find souls and shelter and comfort of your loving hands. Now, as we go about this day, God, please bless us and our families in Jesus' name.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that leads us right into Daniel's presentation. Sure. If you would, sir. I would be happy to. All right. So again, we're talking about the ARCA funds, American Rescue Panag Company. I just want to briefly cover some of the changes in the final rule, which I think are good for us. We'll talk about some of the money already obligated, those projects that city staff has kind of narrowed down our capital improvement list to talk about what products we think should go forward, to discuss what is left over the funds and the next steps, what's going on. So they've made several changes in the rule. A lot of these were done because other cities were kind of pushing the envelope, what they could do. A lot of questions, a lot of things like that, what can we do with all these things? So these are the new seven different allowances that are allowed in the ARCA funds. The main ones for us, I think, are important, or of course, the investments in water and storm infrastructure, which is important. Then also, some of these government service to extend revenue loss, and then also, a lot of these capital expenditures, those things, I said that twice, sorry, there's only six, and it's seven apparently, but that capital expenditures is a big game changer. And what that means for us is that a lot of things that were not approved when we first got the storm, when we first got the money, are approved now. Stormwater is added back into it. Stormwater was excluded in the first round. Capital improvements, I mean, capital, things like vehicles, renovations, studies, acquisitions, maintenance programs, it all is justified, as long as it doesn't exceed $1 million. You don't actually provide any written justification for it. You just have to expend it as long as you can justify it in some sort of terms, that is, for the public health good. So that does include like a fire truck or something like that, if you really want to go that route. And then the other thing that is kind of the big changer, this is where there's a little bit of question about how we have to do this, there's a formula, but up to $10 million, we can claim for revenue loss and just go ahead and say, this $3.8 million or whatever's left over at this point can be used for anything that we've lost revenue on, so we can really assign it to anything at that point. I think, though, we should have an easier time still doing the infrastructure rules and then everything else left over we can look at. Still things that are not being able to use for debt, pensions, we cannot increase our reserves, which, you know, increasing our war chest, so to speak, and then also any judgments or legal payouts, so we can't do anything like that. That's still a thing. So this is what has already been obligated of the 3.8 million roughly that we have. We did $410,000 for premium pay, which is about 11%. We already did obligate about $300,000 in grant matches, which is 8%. That included a CDVG study, a RIA study that we looked at, is that a part of that? And then also a generator, among a few other things. And then we also did obligate $100,000 for canal infrastructure, and we haven't spent that yet, but that's, we haven't spent most, a lot of it yet, but that's what's going on with that. So as you can see, there's still 79% that was unused, okay? Did everyone have a chance to review the documents that went through? The best one was the cheat sheet that came out, it was a four pager, it kind of went through some of the uses. So city staff and I met, and we discussed, we looked at our capital improvement plan that she should have gotten, that's from Pan Engineering, that's been a living document. I don't think I have a, it's this document that went out in your list, it went out earlier. That is a list of projects, all relatively related to infrastructure. It says our water plants, our water towers, it does our wastewater treatment plants, our lift stations, and our wastewater treatment plant, and everything that's in between that. So this list, we really took a look at it, and staff came together and looked at what projects we thought would be good to move forward on based on the need going on. The two big ones were the egg-shaped tank, the fifth street tank, and then cemetery tank. Those two tanks, we discussed, are, they're 60 and 50 years old respectively. That is the main source for our drinking water. What we want to do, though, instead of moving forward on a new tank just yet, after really kind of talking about, we talked about doing a new tank, which is about $1.5 to $2 million, including land acquisition, that really would have eaten up all of our ARCA funding, and whether or not that's the best idea, we're not sure. Maybe it'd be better to wait until we can get another funding source later on. This allows us to extend the life of these things by rehabbing the pump houses. So I did, there's not, I was going to provide some pictures for it, but essentially, these pump houses are in need of repair, and I'll be happy to share those pictures with you. They're rusted, they're still providing clean drinking water, they're still doing everything they need to do to keep them. But we think that we can use $275,000, $1,000 for each, to rehab those pump stations, and then anything we do in that pump house, we can then transfer to the new house later on, so we won't lose much. It's going to be new pumps, new pipes, and electrical panels for everything, bring it over here. So that's, that's $550,000 on the water side. As far as the wastewater side, we looked at four products that we thought would be a good idea to get started on. One is air release valves, those are coming from the industrial area, there's things that, it's pretty caustic that comes through that pump, so those things need to be replaced. That's $45,000, Black Creek pump, lift station replacement, and then rebuilding two of our lift stations that have some generator issues for $15,000, $25,000. So in total, that's what we're proposing is $1.1, $1.2 million for water and wastewater, and then the final portion of that is $900,000 to match the FEMA grant that we talked about, you should have gotten your packet. That FEMA study is $3.8 million, the city's already obligated, or 3.5, the city's already obligated themselves to do that. If we don't pay for that, we're going to have to take it out of fund balance anyway. So we are looking at, since stormworks back in, why not go with $500,000 of our grant match too? So at this point, I guess we just kind of open up for discussion and see what you guys think. Some of these projects, if you go through the capital improvement list, we can talk about other projects that we've worked through, or whatever questions you guys have.
Is, I think you and I talked about it, you and I talked about it too, do we really know the condition of the tanks and those water towers? You know, you said there's an X-ray analysis-
Yes.
-that will tell us exactly how thick and resilient or whatever the tower walls are.
Yeah, that's specifically the egg-shaped tank. So that tank is 60 years old. It was hypothesized by our engineer that this thing has been same blasted so many times, that's only logical, that it is nearing the end of its, and I'll be happy to send this to you, Mr. Drew, if you like-
Okay.
-nearing the end of its lifespan. And it already has. Life, water tanks always last about 40 years, so this has been going on for 60 years. I believe the city's been looking at this since at least 10 years prior, 12 years prior now, because Natalie just came in, she said she was looking at it. And so what we want to do, though, after we had another team come in to look at the tank, probably to actually look at maintenance of all the water tanks in the city, he said it's one of the best tanks he's seen for that age. So we thought then it might be a good idea for us to do some sort of analysis, spend the money to know what exact condition of this thing is in, how thick is the walls? Because really, it's metal that's surrounding the whole thing, and we don't want to puncture anything to disrupt that kind of, they don't make them like that anymore, so we'd have to really kind of invest in one, in something similar. Most people do those pedestal tanks that you see now, they're kind of more teardrop-shaped.
So if one of these went down, we would be able to still supply the needs of the city, or are we going to have to borrow from water and sewer, don't you care, water and sewer, or what?
It depends on where.
Well, let's just say the older one went down.
So if the old one went down, that would be, we would be able to pump enough water from other areas in the city. Right now, there's about seven different water tanks throughout the city. Because of where it's located, the Sixth Street tank, or Fifth Street tank, rather, is pumping about 60% of our water. It's just the best location. We then pump that water all the way up to Smith Street, and then we pump it back down from our low pressure side or high pressure side. That's why that Smith Street project is so important. That's what's really going to build the resiliency that we need. If everything else happened, we have not tested to see what happens if the egg-shaped went down, what would happen if we had to pump from other areas of the city. This is a critical need, this tank needs to be refurbished at some point. I just think that we can, with the Smith Street well being built, this thing going forward and being able to do some proactive, proactivity on it, by doing the pump houses, extending a little bit of life out on it, if we do X-ray, and we find that the walls are thick enough so we can do some rehab on it, then we can buy some time. But right now, it'd be, it'd be a hold your breath for a moment until we figure out what's going on, but we can pump from other wells throughout the city if we need to, and divert enough water around. It just hasn't ever been done, but theoretically, that's the conversation we've had with our engineers many times. If one went down, what would happen?
So they never really tested.
Well, it's all, I mean, these pumps haven't been run, and we'd have to backflow things that we've never backflowed, also in other areas. And so there's pumps in there that are built for it.
Right.
It's just, we run them every so often, and we pull from different, like, for instance, one tank only pulls maybe 2% of our water, so to pull, to put a strain on it to pull 30 or 40% would be something that hasn't been done.
All right, that's interesting, though. In fact, you would sometime in general just do a test to make sure the stuff is working.
We do, and we do, everything's in operation. It's just whether or not we can handle that mold and how we would cycle it around. We might have to pull some, we are tied in several places to county water, so we'd be able to pull some things in, like the hospital can switch on the county water in an instant if we need to, so they would never go down.
So what, we'd switch over time, if the older one went down, before, you know, people lose water, when do they get it back? Is it a day, is it a week?
I didn't answer that.
You don't know?
I don't know, nothing. And that's something that we've never encountered. If a tank went down, it would be catastrophic, but we'd have, we'd find a way to fix it. That's what our engineers are doing, designing. We build it, we do have some resiliency. The Smith Street well that's being built right now, with that $1.5 million, just, it's going to be built soon, is the best, next thing we can do to provide even more resiliency. But this tank, at some point, we will need to spend money to fix this tank, and we do have enough water in different areas to help keep it going for a while, but we'd have to find a way to figure it out. But I'm not the engineer, so I'd probably better answer for you, if I could ask that question, get it back to you.
It makes sense to go ahead, and I think it makes sense to me to rehabilitate the pumps, like you said, that's not, wouldn't be a lost cause, they can be moved and reused as needed. But that, that key piece of information is what is the real condition of the egg-shaped tank?
Yeah.
You know, I think that would be a priority for us, to get an answer for that, and then, then have these discussions, like-
Sure.
-this is when we don't, we don't know, we just, we don't know what to do.
Daniel, I apologize, I was trying to find the side component there where it says water and sewer infrastructure. I've got the sheet that looks like the one to the left there, do we-
No, this is just for me, provided-
You just, okay, sorry. So you went through it quickly, but are you saying the $900,000 of the FEMA grant, I think, makes complete sense, because that unlocks $3.7 million to get the Sixth Street drainage project completely done on that. So you're proposing that plus another million, taking $2 million of the $3 million that we've got, basically?
Yes. I mean, truthfully, we could spend the entire, it'll be all the money on infrastructure. There's enough projects in this, in our capital improvement plan. I skipped everything related to wastewater treatment plant, because I feel like as we go forward, that's going to be a complete overhaul anyway. And let's save all the projects to do at once. Currently, we're, you have 3.5 million gallons per, 3.5 million gallons capacity. We're getting 2.5 right away, but that's, that's when there's no infiltration. When we had infiltration, we exceed up to 5 million gallons. So that's part of these, part of these projects are to fix our, with our lift stations, which are taking a lot of excess water from rainwater. South Park, for instance, the one that we're working on now, where we had the rain event this past week, it went up to 16 feet, normally it's at 8, and that's the depth of the well. We had to do an emergency pump, Anderson, a pump 33,000 gallons out to keep the people's homes from backing up a storm surge. So we did that, and it took almost two weeks of those pumps running 24/7 to get that water done, and that's just from rainwater. So we have significant, you know, this is just the list, these are things we can see. We have significant rain, you know, infiltration going on, groundwater tables are very high. So, yeah, I could, I mean, this is, this is taking a million of the, suggesting taking a million of the ARCA funds, spending on infrastructure, which we so desperately need, hitting some critical areas, two of our most, or three of our most, not dire, but in need of repair, lift stations, and then doing something to help us with some of the issues we have from the industrial park, air release valves, and of course, the wastewater plant. We could do more, we could do less, this is what we're working on.
No, but those are fine there, I just want to make sure, like I said, I was looking for that, that big sheet to see what you think allowed, put together, and then. So what was the figure that you said we had already, the 300 and something thousand? I missed that.
Sure. So we've already spent roughly $800,000, obligated $800,000 of canal money, so we're looking at, not, not money, ARCA money with canal, premium pay and grant matches.
What was that, 300, though?
300,000, the various grant matches that we decide in our budget.
Except for CDVG, RIA, and generator, I got that down, I just didn't get the amounts.
300,000.
300,000.
Are there any additional needs for the city that are grant eligible?
Yes.
Because we're not using but 8% according to the pie chart, because anytime we can use a grant and a match, like Bobby said, 900-
Sure.
-final project, 3.7, 3.8, I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer, especially with that need, because that is, but other ones that you say, well, we might, could move that one from this position of the wish list up the chart, so we could scratch it off and-
Absolutely, yeah. We're going to be going up, I mean, we're going to be going after as much grant money as we can for even these products we're assigning. The next thing on our agenda is to prove, actually start to invest this money, so I'm in real no hurry to spend this money. I just like to get this money, start to be obligated for things, so we can start preparing for it, once I know we have dedicated funding for it and start moving forward. A lot of these projects are ones that don't really have grants that really kind of make sense for it. For instance, the rebuild for the water towers, the pump stations, really, you tie them into a complete new project. So if we could go ahead and spend $275,000 that we didn't have, and then lower the cost of that project overall for the loan we're going to have to do, it makes sense to us to do it, for us, at least. And again, some of these other projects are just kind of, these are some of the slow, more of the lower hanging fruit woods that we could look at. Again, there's some pretty high-ticket items that are coming up. The cost of the water, wastewater treatment plant is probably $9 to $11 million, and that's going to need to go out for bond, and currently, we need to kind of pause on bonds, because we're going to pull a lot of money out. So this is just things to help us bridge the gap, and even if we can go after that big thing, and any grant that we're going to be doing, it's going to be, we have more, I have two staff, now dedicated staff to grants on the finance side, so we're going to be going after those as hard as possible.
Several months ago, you mentioned there may be a second ARCA money, possibly? Have you heard any, have you heard any more?
I have, and I think they've been trying so much to figure out what to do with this ARCA. So this interim rule just came out, gosh, earlier this year.
January 6th.
January, yeah. And, and so they're just up here, so I haven't heard anything. I definitely think that it's possible, look at what the president's putting out with his, you know, plan for his, I think they're getting ready for all their budget stuff right now, too, so.
Was that 5.8 million yesterday? There wasn't anything in there, they advised what opposed yesterday. What is still out there, our legislature was batting it around, but it seems like that's gotten lost and down to the end of the list, and they got a ton of money that they hadn't figured out how to spend yet, and they were going to offer that, some of it, to the cities to say, we'll give you some, and you put some of yours in there, but I hadn't heard any talk on that.
I wouldn't hold my breath on that.
No, they're just, they're so long down, they got more money than they know.
That, that 5.8?
5.8.
I mean, that stuff was stated yesterday. Yeah, about that.
So that's the money we were talking about, the strategic plan. We are still going after those, the maniac, the secretary, giving green lawn, the road, those types of things, we're still preparing, we've been working on getting those things, lots, lines, plans drawn up, so we can approach them about that. But that's, we're going to try and go after that money as we can, as we can.
Well, we have until 2024 to make a final decision, so I hope today is kind of the first of several discussions, and use, like you said, you're throwing it up there and saying, this is a good use of it, and I think it is a good use of it. And that leaves us a million roughly to talk about some other things, because I'd like to not miss the opportunity to do some above-ground things around the city. Like probably all of y'all, I've been looking all around the state, those little blurbs we get every morning, and see what different cities are doing. I reached out to MASC, and I've got just stacks of need projects and things that we can do. We might build another park, we might improve our parks, you know, green spaces as part of the final rule. There's things we can do for people less fortunate, I mean, just all sorts of things. So I don't know how deep you want to get in weeds today, because it is just a first discussion.
Yeah, I just, it is the first discussion, absolutely. I just want to make everyone cognizant that we're noticing, especially just since next time, I'm not sure how this is going to play out as we go forward, the lead time on all of these materials is getting longer and longer.
If we said yesterday, it'd still be a while.
It'd still be a while.
And do we want to buy at the peak cost of all these materials right now? If we could not have to do that, why don't we, I mean, we don't want to spend any more money.
Well, some of these things are, like I said, the water treatment plants, the tanks, rather, are nearing a critical stage. I was, I'll provide some pictures to you, it's just not something I really love to, for public consumption, but it, it's providing still clean drinking water, but to put a wrench on these things would be kind of scary, because you don't know if it's going to go back.
That herb who handles our water, I know we haven't had issues, but they were back in the news again last week.
Blackened labs, wastewater.
Blackened labs, wastewater, and everything. So do we, do you have any confidence in, are these today's figures, or these were estimated before costs?
No, these are right around the cost of starting to go up, so these are all, these are mostly their estimates, what we have, that's what we can say here. The costs are probably going to go up there.
So Dan, did you say that the Safe Water Funding was in there as well?
To, for this, yes, ma'am, we could use this for any, ARCA money could be used for anything, water and the Safe Water Act and things like that.
Did we not get a separate grant for Safe, I mean, for Safe Water Fund?
No.
Okay, all right.
Everything, the Safe Water Act was mentioned in ARCA, but it was just a main thing, was would qualify, that would qualify for ARCA. And that was in the original.
Yeah.
This stuff was already kind of pre-approved-
Right.
-even before this last interim rule. We've just taken a hard look at all of our needs, we've narrowed it, you know, $16 million list down to one, to try and get some money going towards infrastructure, because we just need to, this is funding that, all this is going to have to be spent at some point.
Yeah.
We just want to get this jumpstart on some things.
So we'll want to be talking to our chiefs and different people about some of the other ones, some of their needs.
Yes, that's what we're talking about right now.
I had an off-the-wall conversation with Chief Burr at F3, I said, well, I said, new fire truck, and he said, well, we're trying to build one out now, and he said, that's $1.2 million just for a fire truck. He said they have some other equipment that they could all use, probably use, and said that's about $3.75,000, but they're writing grants to try to get those.
Yes.
This could be a backup of fire trucks, that's amazing. It wasn't 10 years ago, the last new truck we got was like three quarters of the, and they're all different types of trucks, but that's amazing.
And so that's, all this conversation happening now, that's what we're going to talk about now, about next, is, we do have a million dollars left, if we go with this proposal. I mean, again, this is just, I'd like to have an idea as we move forward, what we can start looking at, I'm getting a lot of decisions today, but when we look at the next million dollars, that really is anything we really want to talk about. Fire did approach us in the budget conversation about doing a capital, again, we're looking at all the capital needs of the city, and we're pausing on a lot of them because costs are so high. It just doesn't make sense to really move forward on things that aren't critical, and a fire truck is requested. But looking at our budget, looking at before the fire contract is signed, which is something that April 1st is when we're going to be sitting back down with the county after all those things are done, and moving forward with that, and any extra money from that would actually be able to help us fund a fire truck or other things. So that's why fire truck, even though it's definitely almost a 20-month lead time, it would be great to order it now than do it later on. We might have a dedicated funding source for that, through the county, things like that, so I don't want to waste, spend our, you know, spend everything before we have it. But certainly, we have many different things we can spend it on that are kind of just out there. We've mentioned a new state, we've mentioned, you know, a dump truck, all those different types of things that we need, that we will be at some point, but there's also above-ground projects, I do agree, South Hartsville, this could really fund a lot of matches, you know, a 20% match with a million dollars is a $10 million project, so that would be excellent. So that's what, I mean, the next slide is really, this is again, kind of showing what it would look like, sorry, meant to show this secretly. This is the new distribution, if we looked at some highlights, again, premium pay was 11%, that is on track with what other cities are spending currently at this time, about 10% is what we saw. So you guys are already at 11%. So if you break it down, this is the number that jumps out to people when they're looking at the city, and shows that you guys did invest in our employees during COVID, 53% city infrastructure, I think that's a great statistic. If you look at 24% stormwater, 12, 14, then canals, again, it's going to be a mixture. And then 1.1 million 70,000 dollars is left over. So I just threw in a bunch of stuff that's kind of in those things, what other people are looking at right now, that sums up what we mentioned, but these are just, I was just kind of grabbing at stuff last night. So again, let's talk about some of the things you guys want to do, do you have any ideas that you want to talk about?
Before you talk about projects, it's a different pot of money, but have you had any additional conversations with Charles about their, maybe spreading their wealth, or how they're going to do that?
I have not. I plan to do that when we talk about our fire district, but I think they're good, they've already had several meetings about what they want to do. They met pretty early on in the county, then got the money first. Yeah. There are the 52 counties where we have the state, and the 17 cities who are not entitled, they were the entitled cities, I guess, to pull them. They got the money earlier. So he's had to do regular reporting, in fact, they just had one do not too long ago, so. Again, the money's been not obligated, but earmarked for things, so that can change. But definitely, I think, I encourage you guys all to talk to your representatives.
I had a conversation with the county councilman Friday, and suggested some things that would benefit Hartsville, but it would be in the county, and I'll have some side conversations on, with y'all on that, give you some ideas, so.
And I've had a conversation with councilmember, as well, county councilmember Davis, and there is drainage issues that they have, and they're working on with their watershed project. Is there any way that we could share our information to them so that they can see how it's coming from the city and going to the county?
Absolutely. And we have, we have a meeting, in fact, we're going to have another hurricane prep meeting coming up with Duke, the county, Sunoco, and we'll discuss, you know, plans. Again, those, those conversations aside, and we're getting, we're getting much better at coordinating when hurricanes are coming in preparation for that, the lake levels, things like that, but we always talk about, the amount, when you have the water that comes out of Sunoco, it then has to count in great, and so I, there's, it's not hard to make that distinction, there are stormwater, there are downstream.
Well, we have a meeting in this, this building quite six months ago, something with Duke and Sunoco and the county and I've kind of, well.
Yep, and so those conversations are ongoing, and so I think it's very easy for us to make that connection, so, definitely.
Several cities, even those who have good internet, have found ways through this last ruling to broaden it out, and a couple of them say, the opinion is that as long as we can demonstrate we are approving broadband for the entire community, it would be permissible under the interim rule. One of the things we've always talked about is having a downtown Wi-Fi, I think you walk by the shop and it pops up, here's your menu. A few fellows who've used this high-speed stuff told me that the new standard is 1 gig of fiber, something, I haven't written it down, and it was just, it's the one that if we wanted to attract a person here who worked for a company, and it's an Amazon, for example, and not have to live there, they need that type of support. And there are three or four companies in the state who would provide that type of system. I'd love to see some of that explored, without making decisions, David, you said, just throw things out there. That's one of them, it was on my list. The other was a green space thing, something to benefit all the people in the city, whether it's a new park or improving things that we have in our existing parks. One of the most innovative things that I came across to help people, it said evaluate how we respond to emergency calls involving people who are having mental or behavioral health difficulties. Two or three cities were doing, you know, some innovative things like, like that. A lot of them are doing affordable housing programs, with a million dollars, I mean, we've got enough left to do that on our sides. Trash, litter, homelessness, I mean, there's, there's just a lot to discuss around.
Absolutely.
There are specifics today.
I think, you know, South Harpsville and Sixth Street Carter, need to be a priority as we, we move forward, I know a million dollars sounds like a lot, but it's not.
Daniel, years ago, when we first mentioned, our broadband was first mentioned, it was mentioned in the sense that we were going to compete with the current cable company, and that's what scared me away, was that if we went to the expense of providing it, and then say, six months later, the current carrier dropped their rate, then we would be stuck with that type of, you know, startup cost. Is it that drastic, or is it something that we can do, like Bobby just said, in addition to what's already offered to us? Because if we can do it in a, just like downtown or whatever, if it, those that don't have it, it pops up or whatever, something we can do to enhance what we do have, is that a possibility, or is it a hit or miss, or you have to choose? Because I'm not well-versed on the.
Sure. I mean, so my understanding of it, so Spectrum currently pretty much has the monopoly down here, and what they're talking about, that fiber. So they currently provide it to one gig of like internet, but what they don't provide is the fiber, which provides the same amount of up, up speed, which is what they really need for doing business. Now, they have all the infrastructure in place to run their line, we do not. So we'd have to acquire all that. The only city I've really seen this be done successfully is actually Newberry. So Newberry took their entire mon, all their money and applied it completely to broadband, and they're going to run their own internet. But they're also an electric city, and they had all the power lines in place. So they are running, and they are going to rent their infrastructure to different companies if they so choose. When you have money, it's easy to make money, and so they had everything in place.
They've got monopoly.
They have monopoly. And cities have a way to push other places out if you so choose, it's an interesting way to do it now. As far as providing Wi-Fi, we'd have to partner from Spectrum to do that downtown, or someone else, I think AT&amp;T has some, you know, some infrastructure in place.
AT&amp;T won't have the up-tempo speed.
A lot of, Spectrum doesn't have it either. It's, most areas, in the way that this is, this is going, especially after talking to the school district and things like that, broadband, in their sense, is just internet. I mean, they say broadband, but they're just talking about internet access.
Yeah, it's just standard.
I mean, I miss, I don't mean building our, building a broadband system, I should have said Wi-Fi, you know, and there are companies who will come in and build that Wi-Fi network that will do not, not.
And things are moving so quickly, you know, buy a computer, a year or a year and a half, it's outdated. Just wondering, with any type of Wi-Fi, whatever the next thing is, what the next speed is, you know, how quickly is whatever we put in outdated? I don't know the answer, but.
And if we did work with a company like that, yeah, to ensure they could keep it up-to-date across, so maintain it, because if we don't have the staff to maintain that level, we have a part-time IT person, so.
Now, Spectrum was providing, or they are providing, their Ultra, which is four hundred megabytes, a four, yeah, four hundred megabytes per second, and it should usually, a hundred dollars or something. But I got it for, my bill was eighteen ninety-nine or a hundred, but, and so Dan and I had a discussion about it, seeing, we wanted to look at, if we could look at Durbel Camps for, for residents in the area, if we could make some type of partnership there.
Yeah.
With all the.
Kind of ring-type technology.
Yeah, we're still looking into that, see if there's a possibility.
Yeah, all the events that we had going on lately.
Building a network on the campus.
And then residents would have to opt-in to give the police the right to view those as up.
I have, I have Lieutenant Riddick looking in to see if there's some sort of program, we might be, I believe there's something, they use it for first responders, but to have, to give them the cameras and that, it would help us, it would, give them a free camera, and allow us to access it if we let them know, and pull footage from that, from a certain period of time. Because if you build that network, people are using these for neighborhood watches and things like that, so we're trying to do it.
What did you have in mind, you said expansion of Byerly?
So we've talked about Byerly two-point-O, you know, expanding Byerly, adding in those, we have those two big lots. Just met with the county the other day, Casey's meeting, for the track that he opted to miss out on. The track, we talked a lot about the running track that's going around the track and field, it needs to be resurfaced. Coker, Byerly, and the government school want to partner with us to do that, we're going to be talking about it. Schools kind of work, Coker's going to take it in the lead right now, and see what they want to do, because they're the ones who really use it, most end of high school, but they want to partner with us. And so, in the discussion, as we were brainstorming, they started really talking about expansion of a collegiate track and field that can actually support tournaments.
Yes, so Coker doesn't have a track and field.
What's that?
They're not upgraded for track.
They're not. And the real thing, which what I understand, it all came back to javelins, throwing six-foot spears at people, apparently it's dangerous. So that's really the main conversation, and these colleges and things like that, the amount of money they're spending on going out to travel, and track and field is really kind of blossoming right now, it's really coming into its own. So they look next door, and say, what are the properties next door that you guys go for? So schools are looking at potentially partner with us, they want to build something. So when I say Byerly two-point-O, we've always talked about potential expansion of Byerly. But that's just throwing it out there.
Is the school district interested in that company?
Yes, school district's there, it's there too. Amendments, so.
None of our high schools could ever support those sports.
No, 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 they're, they're revenue law sports, so no revenue.
Yes, but, I mean, we were the only schools in first place and everything else, that just didn't have a team.
Right.
I mean, and that was for years.
Apparently, the, with the, with all the brads, this is like three brads at our high school, high school now, they're really expanding out there, track and field, they went from.
Twenty-six to seventy-three.
To seventy-three kids. So they really are expanding, and the same with Coker and the government school, so they're really pushing it. And so, we had, Adam and I had met with them, this all-star, Jamie Morpheus started a conversation last, or a year and a half ago. It didn't go through the right channels, so he, I came to the table, Jamie was there, and then Dr., you know, Principal Lewis, but there wasn't really any interest from Coker. The government school had an interim president, they declined to even contribute. So it suddenly became, we're now, there's four people using it, really, and then just three people have to pay for it. And so finally, I think Dr. Harder got involved, then Dr. Lewis, so it was all the big wigs came out to meet at Byerly, we all talked about it. So there's commitment to look at how we can partner together to recircus this thing, at least to make it a practice field for all of them. But it certainly cannot be used without major enhancements, and the conversation went to building a new park, or expansion of a park. And we always talked about, you know, if the soccer fields are taken by Neptune, which is a possibility, because Neptune has to expand, where do we put our soccer fields?
But we do have adjacent properties that are vacant, that's a good thing.
It is a good thing, but it's mostly ledgers, from what we understand, it's a little hard to use.
Square, man, and then put that, spray that, Neptune Park over there. You gotta.
You know, people.
That's an attitude, man. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta have it there already.
Just put a couple, leave it up.
That would be interesting.
Can't do anything on wetlands, can you?
It's, I don't know if it's classified as well, but it just is very.
No, but I'm saying, if a place is designated as.
You can mitigate it, you can mitigate it, mitigate swaps and things like that. I think we do have those trees, which I know you always talk about, right? But that would be the question that come up with him, we talk about tournaments quite often, what they bring tourism-wise for a town. And one thing I know that Adam does have, kind of working against him, is that we only have eight fields. And right now, with my son doing travel ball, y'all, I mean, we live in Lexington, because of how many fields they have, and the amount of people, and the hotels are packed, and so what, what it's going to come down to with those soccer fields, if we're able to secure that lane, because we don't own that yet, right? With the trees back where the baseball and softball goes, or that, that piece of property right there, while we might need soccer, the better investment is going to be the baseball and softball, because we need more fields to be able to continue to grow in that. But Neptune will have to have something at some point, I mean, we knew that when we started that. It's going to have to have a tower, but a second tower.
It's got to grow towards soccer field, you can't grow.
And, that's exactly right. So the water park is built where it was, because off of the land surveys, if the land, the investment they were going to have to make to build off the other side of Neptune, beside the splash pad, that land, it couldn't support it because of the water levels, I believe. You know, they had to do many studies about what the land is made up of, and they said our only direction to go would be to wrap around to the soccer field side. It was going to cost a lot of money to build the land up on the other side. It wasn't for how big of, it was cool to see it when they built the water park, to see the pillars, and to see all the rebar, all of that that they're having to put in to make it, and they said the other ground couldn't support that type of structure.
If they had a swamp land, it's. I don't think it was cost. Lazy river.
Another tower.
Building, you can do the field, no, I'm back to the baseball.
Sure. Yeah, do you know, have we ever gotten a price on those?
No, it was, it's one of those pipe dreams. I could reach out, because Myrtle Beach is rebuilt, or they're building a whole nother thirty-six million dollar complex.
And Arlington County just built one, right?
They've got the approval to build, I don't know where they're at, so I could reach out and learn.
We're exploring.
Yeah, I could reach out. So the, the, the price in a ball, or, or complex is the only end of the, it was, it was. Otherwise, it's just like.
Smart, so. Which question are you coming?
And Charles is maybe theirs right now. Yeah, so I just remembered, Charles has cleared land, they're just setting off here.
What you've been having is, is, you have one there, but it's, it's a very good function that the person does, if you just really have a same call.
You wouldn't have to have offices in it, I don't think.
No, but you, but you need a concession stand.
You gotta have concession. But do you, do you have to have the upstairs? I don't think so. It depends how you do the scoreboards.
We, I would more model it after a smaller complex that doesn't have offices, but has like an entire changing room and a restroom, and then concession stand at the bottom, because we don't need the offices.
Okay.
So that will save money there.
I was contacted by Anthony James, who ran track at Harpsville High, and he was interested in helping children, you know, with track and field, getting some interest there. And now that you all are talking about the colleges being able to do that, he wanted to know, well, what could the city do? And I told him, right now, the city didn't do anything, well, that was a year and a half ago, maybe, that the city, you know, that we just couldn't do anything right then. And if there's track and field entrance from the government school and Coker, then that may be a program that he'd be able to get in and have for children, you know, to be a teacher.
Largely our contribution, or our involvement with track is, our citizens use it to walk. It's a little softer than the things, and it's really, the thing that's tearing it up is the starting blocks, and over the last fifteen years or so, those starting blocks dig in, and then they start a different place, then, they are using some metal cleats, but that does really, did let's kick off that first thing. So that's really what's damaged, and then to replace only that section for tripping hazards, we have to do the whole thing at once. And again, this is, like, fifteen years ago, this built or so, so the technology's improved, different straps, you know, sub-strat, things like that. So I think that if we could provide, if we could have some programs for kids, it definitely would make it even more helpful for us.
What does it cost to, to resurface?
So right now, we're looking at close to, the total cost, two-hundred-and-seventy for the resurfacing of a hundred or so, asphalt has to go down, because when they tear it up, they're going to be empty asphalt, and that's split four ways.
About Terrence Harrington Track.
The Terrence Harrington Track, yes.
Senator, he was trying to get that track, the old man, Nate, that Terrence Harrington, he's looking for projects?
Sure, yeah.
You think that would be?
This is, again, I think it'd be, there's more conversation that we have, and we're still in a completely, it's in his good seat, so he'd be definitely someone to talk to about it.
He's looking for projects right now?
Yeah, Terrence Harrington, Compendia, and the Olympics.
Right.
We had huge, you've been on that.
Yeah.
Please go back to your screen where you had the million-two there for all the construction, all the way back to your list, yeah, right there. How much of that do you, or, and I'll ask this of you or Karen or anybody that should be asking, how much of that do y'all think of the million-two that we really could get from other sources, so that we say it's kind of obligating, a million-two in our minds there? What might the real number be, do you think, Griggs?
Bob asked that earlier, and I mean, the thing that I'm concerned about, a lot of these things are a little bit more difficult to kind of do small projects like this. Most of the time, we go on utility projects, it is through a bond or SRF loan, so the amount is not really there. The only one that I really kind of see that we could go out and do as a group is the water towers, but that would go from a two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar project to possibly a one-point-five two million, just do the whole thing at once. Again, these are kind of projects that we felt, after looking at the whole list, were ones that we could not go out and go, that's supposed to be money for, ones that, because we took that thirteen million dollars, took it back down. Karen, do you have something?
I'm raising my hand. Yes, I wanted to make sure, this, you know, this too, when we had these discussions, this is right in time with all our budget meetings, so this has been very helpful. So really, that remainder, we had those discussions of like, let us know what y'all want us to present, with the capitals they had. Also, in conjunction with those conversations, we talked with Shannon, but she was handling grants at that time, about which grants we already had open. So for ones we already have open, we can't necessarily put in for these, so those have to be closed. So when we were considering the breakdown of this list, we were also considering grants we already had open, and would those be finalizing out, because we can only have so many rehab grants. And they like to rehab projects, they're more of like maintenance, they don't really like to do reafor those. So, like we said, he mentioned that earlier, now we have Chastity and Terry really heading up grants. In the meantime, I've always felt like there is a disconnect there with it not being financed, it's big money. So I'm excited to have them working on it, and Chastity's really excited to be researching grants and making sure that we're not missing anything. But I will say that when this list was narrowed down, it was in consideration of do these qualify for grants, and these weren't ones that were easy to get, and which grants did we already have open, so we can't apply for these right now.
Exactly.
We can see the grid, full picture, we were trying to make it all connect.
Dan, I would suggest, you know, we had hometown legislative back today, and we had dinner with Senator, and he mentioned the Marion Cemetery Cemetery.
Right.
But I said, affordable housing, and he said, well, Casey Fields is right from Mcdonald's.
Right.
So I think it would be who was to bring the Senator in, or talk with the Senator, so that he can help back us, and help, maybe, help us get more funding for some of these projects that we're looking at doing.
Absolutely, I mean.
Especially now that Shannon is gone, the two people that you just mentioned, they're doing well, but I, I think it just would be who was to let Senator know what we have, what's been suggested, and see what help he can give.
Right, I mean, that's part of this idea, is as, as we identify projects, now we have a target, and that's something that we need, it's, it's one thing to kind of say, here's our list, what can you do?
Right.
That's why we're going very targeted with Marion Cemetery, Green Lawn, South Street, South Fifth Street, those sort of things, or Sixth Street, excuse me. We're going very targeted at those things, so, and working with Senator the last two years, I really appreciate his directness, what we're doing, and trying to make sure that we're not just throwing something at him to his sticks.
Right.
He likes to do diligence before, so. I think that as we look at these things, if you guys are comfortable in kind of principle going out for at least a million, obligating a million of the infrastructure, kind of going like that, then we can start looking at these things more deeply, moving forward on some of this stuff. Bringing it back to you guys for a formal vote to do this, because right now, this is just discussion. And once we start obligating these funds, although we have an appointment for obligate, that's in the year for now. And so we need to start, we just need to start moving at some point. We've had these for almost, six months now, we've had about half the money, and it's gonna go with them. So, but in the meantime, we're gonna invest it, and hopefully, and we're gonna...
And something new just came on the table as well. Counties with over fifty thousand population, they are going to be eligible to apply for some grant money, and it could be in affordable housing, but it makes Darlington County and some other counties now eligible for a funding source that they had not provided yet.
Well, I hope they're aware of that. I'm not sure they've been very legit.
Do the projects have to be started by twenty twenty-four or completed by twenty twenty-four?
They'd be completed by twenty, they'd be obligated and completed by twenty twenty-six.
By twenty. You mentioned earlier about investing the money with the amount that we haven't committed. If we were to do something like that, or could we possibly make enough interest on the money to maybe scratch an additional item or two off the list, or?
No.
It's not, it's not that much, but I reached out to our financial advisors, companies that do all of our bond work, and they said, when it's this small amount, they like to have three to four million, which I also met with First Citizens last week about potential. So y'all, we're definitely on their list, we're a target for them, they see our reserves building, which is exciting. I told them, wow, to think, they, they wanted to come have a meeting with me about potential investment pool. So they're noticing our account building up, that's why they wanted to come see us. And they just lowered our rates again for us on our credit cards, things like that. So Terry does excellent job of sending it to them periodically, and she gets them to lower it, or to match it. And she had another credit card processor that's doing it lower for us. But with that being said, with the one-point-eight million, we're going with the South Carolina pool that I can draw every day, it's an overnight sweep. So I, I don't think the interest is gonna be very high, but why, why let it sit here? You know, Bobby had brought that up before. So I said, listen, we finally do have some money that we can put in it. We have about the one-point-eight million is what I was thinking though, because we only draw down half. So we have the one-point-eight million.
Karen, I pulled that.
We have one-point-eight million, you checked it a little bit?
What about the four rooms? We take that out?
That, yeah, I got that amount, or maybe it was one-point-five, but it's not a huge amount.
What are we getting on our side?
We don't have it in anything right now.
It's just not invested, it's just...
That's right, so now we're gonna be putting in this pool.
Their rates went up just a little bit, they're paying, they pay on a monthly basis.
That's right.
But they say minimum of ten percent is all that's liquid daily.
Yeah, and that's why, so like, we don't need to pull it out daily. This is one that we should be able to sit on. I'll check with that, I know that most cities use this account for their reserves.
Ninety-six cities.
Yes. So I could find a warrant, but for right now, since we didn't have any obligated, we felt comfortable being able to let it sit in that account, and we're ready to do it.
They're paying zero-point-one-seven is their monthly rate now, that's up from zero-point-one-two just three months ago.
Right.
Apply that, you said one-point-eight, we'll look at that.
And that was the fight with the money.
Decent plan, of course, it can sit there for a year.
That's right, if it's sitting for a year, that would be great.
Definitely, if we can do something with it.
That was the argument coming down, when you stay.
Two percent of one-point-eight, you give that thirty-six thousand or three-hundred-and-sixty-five? No, that'd be three-hundred, I think thirty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
But it's better than it just sitting, not making anything.
It makes sense to have it just sit there when we actually...
Well, again, we've never really, the city has not ever been in this position. We haven't been in a position where we can invest money. That's why, as we move forward and we start building our reserves, which has been very important the last two years, is to build our reserves. And again, our money is just sitting there. So eventually we'll be able to draw down the additional money too, the other remaining fifty percent, and that's even more money in the account.
Bob did almost pay, I mean, you know, if it pays twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, if it's set there for a year, I mean, it pays for, it'll pay for twenty-five thousand dollars or something that we don't have right now, so.
Right.
It's really easy to get it set up, once we have this passed today, Terry will have the final piece to have that ready to go into trade smart.
You see their applications, like put in your name, and sign it.
I sent her the link, and we had it good to go that day, she sent the resolution down. So, I'm glad we have money to put in it, because we've never been in that, that situation, so.
And just something that I can share in probably a point, so this interest money is completely free to use for us. It is not tied to anything. So it could be just pumped back into general fund, it could be council slash fund, just kidding. It could be whatever you need it to be. But it definitely could be used to pay for a project.
Well, that, that was the fight from the state, because they pulled the money down and wanted to hold on to it, and the cities, or, or, and I guess some of the cities and counties as, as well, argued, you know, for them to be able to get their portion of the money so that they could have interest on their own money.
I'll either defer or deny that.
Well, it took, it took a long time to get to us, I know that for sure.
Yeah, that was the fight.
There was some talk about that was potential. Counties and seventeen cities got the money.
Nine-point-three million dollars in this month as of January.
That's the state's sacrifice, huh?
Ninety-six cities plus counties plus governmental agencies, they're all doing it.
They just sacrifice, huh?
And that lets them get command, they're investing in all in double-A government bonds, but you're getting a little bit better rating, and some other things. It's all the same thing, safety's their first thing, liquidity is their second customer. You know, it's a demand deposit, we can call on it at any time, so it's not gonna get tremendous interest with anything, it's about...
And First Citizens sacrifice, when I met with him, with their financial portfolio person, they brought him, they brought him in from Somerville to meet with me. He had said that they needed about three million, and actually, their plan would be that they would buy bonds with our money. But I need to be able to let it sit, it's not a liquid type thing. It would need to sit for at least three years. They said there is a way to get that back, and I was like, oh, that's so cute, y'all think I'm there? I'm not quite there yet, but I was like, thank you for coming, I see that some type of red flag went off in your system to reach out to me. So I was like, that's great that we're on track, because y'all are noticing our, our reserves going up. But we're not quite ready for that.
Well, just to be clear, I don't think we're ever gonna reach three million.
We could get there.
That's thirty percent of our...
Yeah, but it can be utilities fund too.
True.
It's not just general fund.
True.
I know, we have that type of money, but I'm not ready to let it sit for three years.
Right.
So... I, I, all right, I was like, we're, we're not there yet. But there are definitely things that are triggering in their system to, to put us on the radar, which is always a great sign.
Which is probably gonna be eighty percent of that in very government to do. Karen, do we call it a war buff, or the care?
Say it, maybe in a care mode, that's what we'll say, I don't know.
So, in principle, I mean, what else, what else we want to talk about? Are we kind of good with this in principle, or are we...
Yeah, I think...
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, we kind of might have reached a stop point if we wanted to, any last questions on the awkward presentation, maybe take a little break, keep this meeting rolling?
I have a question. No, I just have one question, would y'all be open to, if we, because we got a lot of great ideas for what departments, I think this has probably been one of our most successful years with budget meetings, they were all very long, a lot of good information was brought to us about some necessary, in their minds, which I get it, because they're in that day, every day of capital needs that they would really like to have. When we have these discussions, is that something that DNR, I could do it to get a list together? I know that y'all are talking about kind of the open end and remainder, just so y'all can see what staff have asked us about, fire truck is a great example, right? That was something we talked about for a while there, the dump truck and the stage, most people talk about the stage. So I felt like it could be helpful, along with the ideas that y'all have, and kind of what staff has put to us as well, the next time we have this discussion.
Well, what I can do is provide you guys a list of things that were asked for. Some stuff I just, we, we're not gonna do this year, I didn't see any for, things like that. But definitely things that are necessary, but we can use our funding for, if you guys are okay with using it to expend capital. These are necessary items that we might necessarily not be able to afford this year, but we'll need eventually. So I'll be happy to provide you guys a list of things that were requested, denied in the budget kind of conversation, or, you know, postponed for various reasons, but brought back to you guys who have things. Since we have this extra funding available, that was not typically available for the budget here. Is that something you guys are interested in seeing?
I'm open to looking at everything, but since we've taken two-point-eight, basically, we drove over to three-point-eight, I also would like a companion slide for us to put together over time of things that would be more beneficial to the general public, you know, in a different sort of...
Okay.
I understand, outside, but yeah, sure. Look at everything.
Hey, I wanted to ask a question.
Miss Ma.
The Ninth Street Dirt Road.
Yes, when that competes the dish?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can we look at doing anything to close that road off to the general public? And just using it for fire, water, police, and emergency services and sanitation?
I don't know how much they use it for all that, because it needs to be pretty improved surface for our fire trucks to go. Last time I was down, it was not exactly what I was...
Do you see traffic up and down?
Were you more of us talking about the extra traffic and discussing the different...
Well, what, what happens here is, it's a, it's just, they have that criminal element to come through there and do everything they wanna do, because they have access to that road.
Sure.
And, and I was looking...
Is that the indicator of traffic?
Yes, yes. Just looking at whether that road could be closed and used just for, you know...
Like just a few swinging gates or something?
Yeah.
Where the city would have keys, when you get a vehicle over there.
I don't think that's a good idea, because that way you create one entrance. That road has never been paved, I grew up on James Avenue, never been paved, never. Been neglected for six to five-plus years. It need to be reconstructed, addition to be cleaned out. Matter of fact, I went to this yesterday. The cute thing I thought about this is, they neglected that section of Ninth Street dish from Marlboro to Jasper. Although it looks pretty nice. So that's something you gotta consider about, you can't have like one-way heat, you gotta turn around and come back out. I don't see the criminal in it.
Well, you don't live on that end.
Yeah, I live through, I don't see it.
Yeah, you don't...
That's something I really think about, for you to close off the street.
But you don't...
Even though, I use them when I go up there sometime. Because you can't go fast, and, and, I think that's the idea, once the crumbs don't know how, they don't know the condition of this road, so they don't know, race through it and tear it apart, that's fine.
Oh, they, they, they know...
It's got a suspension, that'd be...
That's right, it's level road, tear it apart.
I worry about just the fact, it's, I've run sanitation routes with different gates, it is a huge hassle.
Did the trucks have to turn around, come back out?
Fire truck has a key to anything, it's a big saw, so they don't worry about that. It'd be a problem, I think, if we had our sanitation personnel.
Well, I, I...
I hear what you're saying, though, I wonder if...
I just put it out there to see.
Sure. I think, though, that could maybe be worked on from a different angle too, as far as policing.
Yeah.
Daniel, is this, this study that we've got here, is this the three-point-seven million that would be funded by the nine-hundred thousand?
Yes.
So, one minute please, when we can see what I'm misreading, look on page fifty-three of eighty-three.
Sure.
The very top of it, after they get to their narrative there, they say that only projects that demonstrate VCR or water A are considered for funding. And then in the very last paragraph, it says that benefits were compared for this, the study will be less than one, the very last paragraph.
If I, what's that saying?
Page fifty-three of eighty-three.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
No, page fifty-three of eighty-three, which is forty-six in the engineering study. So they go through and build up and say, you have to have these ratings, this rating's important for the Fed to even talk to you about getting a grant, it says it has to be demonstrated less than or than one. And then the very last paragraph, is it a typo, it says this study will be less than one, but then the following sentence is, this will ensure the grant funds are expended.
That could be a typo, again, this study, we've already accepted this grant. So this was done in two thousand seventeen, it could be a typo, I'm not sure.
It doesn't matter, I mean, we, we got...
We, we're paying those, yeah, we're done. And the, I think the main takeaway from this, honestly, is that our system is, I think, an apple round. And so this is the tip of the iceberg for how much has to be spent for the water.
But there was so much of this, Pete hit on it a while ago, that talks about that a lot of these problems happened because we didn't do regular maintenance on a lot of these ditches, there's been years since many of them were touched, and that added to our problems.
That's true, well, again, I, I don't, you say we, the city...
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
No, no, they're not, but, but then it goes on and says, we'll put pipes in, and then there's a couple of men here where it says, well, the pipes are clogged up too.
That's right, yeah.
And maybe that's because the other trash and stuff from the unpiped things are running into what pipes we do have.
Okay, I grew up on James Avenue, it was dirt. Then it came in, put drainage down, it's covered, drainage on that street, you can't even recognize that, because dirt, everything's covered up, alright? So, before I got on City Council, I was always kind of curious about this, right? So, I had a misname, I called it the Donald County Drainage System, alright? I remember all these ditches were. So, for example, I would go out to Donald County Council meeting, sit there, that's how I started out. And I watched them, and I said, then I'm talking to the council, we're peep-pumping, come and make a statement. So, it came out, we talked about flooding in Donald County, talking about Harshville, whatever. So they were peep-pumping, so that's a state problem, that's a city problem. Ninety percent of the streets in South Harshville, so be controlled by state, Sackland Department of Transportation, alright? Over time, they closed up a section of those ditches along Marion Avenue, Marion Avenue coming out behind the Wilson House, then it goes underground, years ago, that, that was all over. Down behind Bell, not Bell Street, I'm sorry, Butler Street, it's part of that same system, that's open. It runs across, it's all in here, it's all in here. So, the bottom line is, so I would go to these meetings, and I talked to one of them, he said, well, you know, when the chain gang, just be out cleaning the ditches, we didn't have that problem. So the third one of them told me that, I said, listen, I don't hear that chain gang story anymore, because I heard it before. If you're gonna take the chain gangs out, clearing the ditches, then you should have put something in place. So I had to talk to people out, you know, on Bobo News and Highway, I called, I don't know how that's, I met the lady from the Donald County. And she had a definitely good argument, she had photos, history, boom, so I, I called the side, you need to touch on this, so. I finally got one of the city reps to give me a email to Sackland DOT. And I started putting in work requests to DOT. They start coming out, clearing the ditch up. And that's what's been happening over the years, over time, all that settlement builds up, draws it up, that's our problem.
Right.
I even came down to City Hall when they had the study, this guy was giving this big spill.
I think that was us.
Yeah, I don't know what, but after the meeting, I, I went up and talked to him, I said, hey man, I remember that ditch. He's, how you guys, how you guys managed to get that? I said, man, we just run up and down that ditch, play all the time, but it kept it clean. It kept it cleaning out. You go to, you go to cemetery, like we pointed out, people throwing refrigerators in there, it's just crap, all over. So that, that's the major problem right there. You got a lot of work to do.
And there's a lot of building from, over the years, like yard debris, it's not back, or it's been crashed in.
Matter of fact, I went on James Avenue, I saw one of these photographs, I couldn't even recognize the street, it looked so good on the photograph, I need to go out and look.
So, so actually... How successful were you in getting DOT to clean out these ditches? If, if you were real successful, that needs to be the game plan.
Well, this is how it works.
What ditches did they clean out?
Nah, 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 that, you know, off of, off of, but Progressive has a, come back from the days of Rebel Hundred, there's a subdivision on the back, on Flicker Drive, over there, they came and cleaned that out.
On Flicker Lane?
Yeah, Flicker Lane, they went off, they came, that's a couple years ago, I talked to the... Now, what they do now, but they know my voice, now, ain't my name. But, you know, we got a good relationship, and they teaching me also. You know, they, they also, they, they...
I'm like, if I was like the train czar.
No, no, it's, but everybody talk about money, the time, and stuff like that. But I see most part of the time, I don't, how we cleaning the ditches out? We just gotta get them to come to the city. And, and I give you example of the Butler Street thing, their argument was, he's not right. You know, okay, now they play games on me sometimes, I'm not saying they're doing the... Now, they play games on me sometimes, I'm not saying they doing delivery, they throw me off sometimes, and I go, okay, I'll let that go. And about a week later, I have another conversation with somebody else, they gotta have the easement. I said, okay, I go back to them, say, it's part of your system. Clean it out, you know, it's part of your system. But, but that's, that's the issue we have, so maybe we need this county, probably get a, have a county manager, this is what we need to do. And I'm like, Don County having that problem, Harzville having that problem, the county. So, that, that, that's how I see it. You see the sanitation building up.
Your call, Eric Curtis, he first called, he got with the Warford, DOT, or flooding in the area. And we, um, we discovered that work order request system, and they came, they actually called us and said, please don't use it, just call us instead.
Okay.
We said, no. But we started working with them, because what that does, it triggers, it hits the reports.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so, when the city's doing it, looks bad for them. So, it's, if you ever wanna own something, just ask DOT if you need it, if it's theirs, and tell them that you own it.
Right.
That's really what it is. And so, we're having this conversation, they have funding issues just like everyone else.
Right, right.
And that lack of maintenance occurred, and their funding is kind of drastically over the years. And they just don't have money.
Yeah, yeah, one of our myths, yeah, one of our myths always, well, you know, uh, those, those roads and streets, they even within the city, the city should be maintaining, you know, you know, they can go back and forth. I'm not gonna get into deep arguments.
The thing, the thing is, you can find the choke points where, you know, it, it makes, where the backlog occurs, get them to clean that out. And then Teresa's talking about, calling to the county about their drainage system, you know, everything, the drainage.
They should, they should be, they should be answered really, really, uh, and why.
This whole thing is about, this ditch was.
Okay, for example, Ninth Street Dish.
Part of the study for the 3.7 million dollars, what we gonna get is ditches cleaned out? I mean, that's, that's a lot.
I don't have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with that.
It says we'll clean them, we'll put pipes where we need to, we'll put in stations that will capture the water so that it doesn't create more water for the rest of other parts of the city. Which that was good to see, that they do that right, then it won't necessarily create more water because they're gonna.
I'll deal with that kind of a different potential.
But, but one thing I noticed, I look at the numbers, we're talking about the height, and I tried to do it a long time ago, look at the topo map. And if you look at it, uh, one area I looked at, I think it was Marin Avenue, maybe, uh, probably did something related on Sixth Street, and the gradients, it's only 10 feet difference. So, it depends on the flow, you know, you're standing in one spot, so yesterday, I was at the corner of James Avenue, up by the ditches, a higher gradient. So, the water stream, if it's flowing this way or it's going over, we don't know how the pipes are laid, what grade or slope they are underground, so that's another issue, so.
Well, that's one perspective.
I think they mentioned something about water flow, they've got in and out of it.
If you told them today that we had 900,000 dollars, what would happen next? Would we have to get in line for this to start, the whole thing to start working out? I mean, could it still be years away or?
No, it would, it would, uh, we'd get a little jump on it. We'd pass it to phase it before, so that we could do this for the years to work on it a lot. So, we, uh, anticipate, we asked for it to be phased, or at least three phases, 300,000 dollars a phase. Now, the conversation will go back to saying, let's go ahead and fund the whole thing, just get it started and program it, so that it probably tells us.
Who, who does the work?
It's whoever they contact out now.
Okay, so they, they do it?
They being E O R M.
Yeah, E O R M.
Okay, so the project manager, they.
Okay, yeah, I'm toward, I'm toward the.
And we'll do all the reporting and reimbursement, just like our other, our grants. We were only able, which might be in there to qualify by our business because of that hurricane. It's just a special law that of money is tough to get into this site. That's right, that's why it's so important, because you have to qualify for it by a certain, a certain level of natural disaster.
So, would you need to bring it to us, to council to vote to spend that 900,000? And if that's the case, and everybody's in agreement, at least on that part of it for right now, because it encompasses so much of the city, why in the world would we go ahead and we'd say, here it is?
We did approve the 300,000 dollars this last time.
300.
So, now this will be essentially either amendment or a change, we'll do it, we're absolutely.
I said, I would suggest, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I would suggest we present the same type of resolution that we did for premium pay that designates the ARPA funds, and then we could include it with the amendment. I don't know how much paperwork it's gonna take to apply, I'll, I need to submit that in and let them know, I'll work.
It's less than millions, it'll be better shape.
Excuse me?
It's less than millions, it'll be better shape, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Sir.
Okay, give me that drainage thing. It's not all on the city, I, I think the state and the county got some issues here too. So, I don't know why we can't collaborate with them, put them to chip in some funds for this, except for that.
Maybe some ARPA funds, I think the thing with this is that we went after this pretty much the city. So, the city went after the 3.5 million dollars, so the city obligated itself for this already in the area, and come out and say, you guys are ready.
And this was before COVID? This is before.
For, for the drain.
This has been going off of a.
Yeah.
We've been a lot before with you.
Let's go ahead and take 10 or so, is that, is that suits everybody? 1022, say 1035?
Sure.
Please say it back now. Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's get on to new business, keep it going. Manager, would you mind publishing the resolution?
Sure. It's, it's resolution 032203, it's authorization, authorizing participation in South Carolina Local Government Investment Board.
A motion and order? Would I hear a, a motion to authorize participation in this investment pool?
May I make a motion that we approve resolution 032203?
Thank you, Councilman Key, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
Was there any impact denied thing? Give nothing there, so.
No, no, there's really no, this is something, again, we first talked about earlier, we've never been in this position before.
Okay.
If we are doing this, see what benefits we get from it, and hopefully as we move forward, and our current fund balance will, and utility balance will be able to do this much more frequently.
And this, this is authorizing participation, so we don't, it's not obligating us to participate, right?
This is authorizing staff.
To be able to, to, to look at it, look at the get it.
This is what we need to be able to engage in.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Anything, have any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor of resolutions, you were 32203, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by name? The ayes have it. Um, resolution, the first reading of resolution 32203 has passed. Moving on to 032204, if you would mind publishing for the record.
We'll clear up page 77 of the agenda.
All right. It's, uh, resolution 032204, it's approval to apply for a grant from South Carolina Parks Recreation and Tourism.
And this is tourism advertising outside of a 50-mile radius of the city.
Right.
Just authorizing an application.
Yes, so, actually Laura, you wouldn't have had to explain, so this is something new that we're able to do.
Yep, so in the past, we have had to apply for this through the Community Foundation for Brevander Harzville, but I found a little bit of a loophole in their process, and we're gonna take advantage of it for this year because it keeps the accounting and finances so much easier if we can manage those as a department of tourism and obviously finance department. Um, so, the tourism advertising grant, we've previously done it through the foundation for, I don't have the exact amount of yours, but as long as I believe for sure, and it basically just maximizes the funds that we can use to promote the city outside of, on what the state can buy from tourism, which is 50 miles from the park. So, the goal boards that you see in the Columbia area, Charlotte area, and things like that, it just helps the state and will fund half of that for us.
Okay, that's good. So, to Better Harzville, is there was a amendment, amount of money, or?
Um, for them, no, it was just a little bit of a trickier process to, because we would apply for things, but we would apply in conjunction with them, and then this will just make reporting easier.
So, it's a matter of who can apply for these types of grants, tourism advertising rates. So, we didn't think that we were eligible to apply solely by ourselves, we went through a foundation. Now, after looking through that kind of loophole, we are eligible to apply. So, we're getting this in, this is fortuitous that we have this meeting because it's actually able.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to Columbia to turn it in on Thursday.
Yes, it's, it's, it was due, so we got the word, we, we had this meeting, so we're able to go forward. So, this is just a way to take out third party.
Yeah, I like it.
So much easier.
We would much rather have it in-house.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, I like it, I like advertising.
You can keep on that factor too.
Oh, yes, that's gonna make it, oh, and it's a lot easier, it's hard on them because they actually have to take that accounting side of it, because she has to be in the job of it, but now, take it off their plate. So, we'll be managing all of that in-house.
So, do we already have the 45,000 set aside for our portion?
We usually have that much each year.
Between.
Does that come out of tourism or combination?
Combination of tourism and watermark.
Neptune Island?
Tourism and watermark.
Yep. And that, it is extremely helpful, it's itself for us, especially the Columbia area. Oh, my gosh, it's huge for the watermark. We get a ton of camp in and.
Not an additional 45,000, we would have to find.
That's right. We do this each year.
And we always apply for the maximum that we're allowed to, because typically they do it based on a percentage, and we typically get in the 35 and 40 range. Typically, we're.
Pete, would you like to turn your endorsement into a motion?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
You threw me off, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 032204.
Second. A motion and a second, all those in, oh, no, discussion now, time for discussion.
Oh, time for discussion.
Is there any, any, any questions?
Um, there's, um, there's a better Harzville that the city partners with, does, do you all know the members on that board?
Yeah, I know them.
Do you guys? And, and I spoke to this before, whenever we're partnering with someone, another entity, and give, giving that type of money and funding, um, we should at least know what the organization is and their mission's taken, and who actually's on those boards.
Right, and we're actually, we're compiling that list, as you asked last council meeting, we worked out about that. Again, this is a way, the, the foundation serves a purpose for us in this regard, this is a way for us to get out of that kind of, not get a relationship with them, but we don't want to lead them to do this portion of it. So, I fully agree, our money should be well documented where it's going, because we always try to do. And so, I don't believe there ever was an issue with this money, that our money's ever going through. Anything we've had to do is always make count for it, but I cannot speak for the rest of the foundation.
Yeah, and I understand that, it's just that I, I would like to have something so that, you know, for, um, then it, if questions came up.
Yes, ma'am. We're getting that, we're getting a comprehensive list to go for, you know, every kind of entity the city has some affiliation with, and that certainly we're prioritizing what to be dealing with money first. It is rather exhaustive, sharing, we're working on that, but again, as sharing has gone.
Yeah, I, I understand.
But no, you're absolutely right, you guys should be fully aware of everything to do with it. Again, it's stuff as it comes up, we kind of have these conversations, but I agree, we're getting that, we're gonna go.
Thank you.
Okay.
And first, some clarification, those, those type of issues would be taken within an audit, and that's something that they ask us about, and that we have to get information from them, we have to get information from their accountants, from their auditors, we have to do the same to parks and verification, we have to get their information as well for any of those that have money for them.
And do we do an audit for them? Do we have a separate audit? The communication is that the park verification is an audit?
Um, we pull everything for them, they absolutely have an audit every year.
All their money away, completely tracked their audit.
We, we do all the accounting for them, we get paid a monthly administrative fee to do all of the accounting for parks and verification.
And the community foundation uses the same firm that the city does now.
Any other questions about that? Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of approving resolution 32204, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by name? The, uh, the ayes have it, so approval of resolution 32204. Moving right along, um, for another grant, resolution 32205, approval to apply for a U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Administration FAA grant. So, again, this is just approving an application for that grant. Have anybody a little bit of background for us?
Sure, so as we move forward, we're gonna be getting ready to do the runway. We, we haven't been triggered by FAA to do any runway rehab, but as we keep moving forward the runway, it's gonna kind of keep an application in process. We are gonna be looking at pausing for a year, again, with capital, to wait for costs